Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May 1st meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. It's May and it's beautiful outside.
Come here, yeah, look at you, come on. Oh, you like Jack, huh? Yeah. A real dog. Our featured dog this week is a three-and-a-half to four-year-old rot German Shepherd mix.
All he wants to give you is paw.
Yep, here you go, give me your paw. Give me your paw. There we go. Good dog. He's a stray, he was found on Diagonal Road. He'll be available for adoption when we get him.
Saturday at 10:00.
Saturday at 10:00 in the morning. So if he's your dog, get down there and get your dog. If not, he looks like a great family dog, and right now we have 18 dogs available. So stop down at our kennel and find yourself a new family friend.
Wow, he really is looking at you like, what do you want me to do next? You know?
While we're talking about dogs, I just want to remind everyone we've got the amnesty month going on for the month of May. And another issue, dog licenses are very important. Last week, we had a dog that got lost in the neighborhood. I found it, walked it around the neighborhood, the development, for two hours, couldn't find the owner. 9 o'clock, the owner came to get the dog, but I already called the dog kennel, to come get the dog, make sure it was safe. And ended up costing the individual $28 for the fees for the license, and $33 to get the dog out. If the owner would've had the dog license, I would've been able to contact the kennel, give them the tag number, and take the dog over to the house. Just a reminder.
Another thing, too, about the mailers that went out for the amnesty program, I'm not sure what happened with, Auditor's Office gives us a list of those people who had not renewed their dog licenses, and for some reason, a lot of people that had renewed still got reminders in the mail. So we apologize that some people were sent reminders that shouldn't have got them, and they were complaining that we were wasting taxpayer dollars sending out, you know, these mailers. So my apologies, it wasn't really our fault, but I'm gonna apologize for that, so, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Do you want to do the appreciations first, or you want me to go through?
We can do the appreciations first, and then we'll let Janine come up and talk about the YWCA. So let's start with-
We have two appreciations today, one for Robin Jones, Director of 911 Retiring, and Melody Leisure, which received the 2012 Ohio Gold Star Award Telecommunicator of the Year.
Want to come up and join us, Robin? We'll do yours first. We have a proclamation expressing our best wishes for your retirement. The young lady approaching the microphone is our Director of County 911, through yesterday anyway. "Whereas Robin Jones announced retirement from her position as 911 Director effective April 30, 2013, and whereas we are recognizing Robin for 23.7 years with the county, and whereas Robin Jones began her employment for Lorraine County on September 11, 1989, as part-time 911 telecommunications, and whereas Robin had several promotions, on May 7, 1995, as full-time, January 27, 1997, as 911 telecommunications supervisor, July 6, 2000, acting director, and January 25, 2001, she became the Director of 911. Whereas her good fellowship and congenial sense of humor with working associates has been enjoyable, whereas Robin is a caring, very cooperative, dependable worker, who will pitch in wherever help was needed, and all her untiring efforts, dedication, and humanitarian kindness will be remembered. Now therefore be it resolved that Lorraine County Board of Commissioners expresses appreciation of Robin Jones for services rendered to the county and its citizens. Further be it resolved, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and staff wish for Robin Jones a very healthy, peaceful retirement for many years to come. Witness our signatures, May 1, 2013, Lorraine County Commissioners." The floor is yours, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Commissioners, I really appreciate your support over the years, and 911 actually has been my life, I will miss it, and I will miss county as well. So with that, I'm just gonna say I do, and thank you very much for your support.
Are you really gonna miss Jim Cordez?
Yes, I really will.
Now, we've been together almost 20 years.
Yes.
You know, what it did say in that proclamation is that Robin used to be the union steward, and we used to negotiate labor contracts, but it wasn't together, because I was on one side of the table and she was on the other side of the table. That was back in the good old days.
Yes, and you were supportive back then.
Well, yeah. We've been doing a lot of work, good work, together, and we watched the organization grow immensely under your leadership and cooperation with outside agencies. So hopefully, you won't be working with an official capacity, but you'll come back in some kind of advisory capacity to continue our relationship.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Jim.
Kind of ironic that you started on 9/11 for 911, isn't it? September 11. I got a letter here from Dennis Curran, who's a Fire Chief, and he had sent a letter, it says, "With the announcement of your retirement from the position of 911 Director, I had the opportunity to reflect on the changes of emergency communication over the last 15-plus years. It was relatively easy to identify many of the significant improvements and achievements to the county fire EMS communications completed during your tenure as 911 Director. Of all of which are the result of your expertise, support, guidance, some of these include: implementation and support of the Mutual Aid Box Alarm, M-A-B-A-S, system, for which its success is dependent on the interaction with 911 dispatchers. The second thing, acquisition of implementation of the current computer-aided dispatch system. Third, implementation of the county's first mobile data terminal, MDT, operation for fire EMS operations. Four, implementation of 911 support for cellular services in the county. And last, communication support for implementation of the county's fire EMS regional and tactical communication channels. Beyond these notable projects, I must also applaud your tireless efforts in working closely with the county's fire chiefs, Mutual Aid Committee, of which I have chaired since its inception. Our cooperative efforts have resulted in the enhanced emergency communications that we have had today, and the development implementation of written operating procedures designed to standardize the best practices of emergency communications. You will be missed by those who worked with you, I personally wish you all the best in your future endeavors, enjoy those moments. Sincerely, Dennis Curran, Fire Chief." So you're gonna be missed by a lot of people, and I've known you even before I came to work here, you were here before me, but I've known you for a long time, and you're a great person.
Thank you.
And we're gonna miss you a lot, but we also know that Tracy is gonna do a fantastic job in your absence, because you trained her well.
Absolutely, she will, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Melody, you want to come up? Melody Leisure, 2012 Telecommunicator of the Year, recognizing Melanie Leisure an emergency communication dispatcher for Lorraine County 911, and her outstanding performance on September 15, 2012. Melody's professionalism and calmness resulted in the rescue of a woman and her children from a domestic scene that escalated. She gave instructions and kept them safe until the deputies arrived. Your actions, skills, and persistence that day demonstrated your compassion and dedication to your career and community. The certificate of recognition is presented to you by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, Ted Kahlo, Lori Kowski, and Tom Williams.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Did you have anything you'd like to say?
It's an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Lorraine County.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, great job.
Robin.
See, Robin, you gotta come back up one more time for your 15 minutes of embarrassment.
Janine, would you like to join us next? And that way you can get to your-
Try. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Janine Donaldson, I'm the Executive Director of the Aliria YWCA, and I'm here this morning to tell you about, let me tell you a little story. In 1913, 10 teachers from Aliria High School approached the affluent women of the Aliria community about starting an organization similar to the YMCA. Those 10 teachers reached out to the affluent women, and together, in six days, they raised $25,000 to start the Aliria YWCA. I'm certain that all of you seated up there are familiar with where the YWCA is located. We're at 318 West Avenue. The big house on the corner is our original establishment, and we have been there since 1913. So, my story today is to tell you that the YWCA of Aliria is proudly celebrating 100 years of services to women and girls in our community. I'm just so pleased to say that. Give us a hand. I also need to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners, not just you, but the ones that served previous to you, because it's the folks that were able to sustain this community over the years that made it possible for the YWCA to continue. On May 11, we're having our official celebration, and I know that most, if not all, of you are aware of that, and we want to invite you out to the Spitzer Grand Ballroom, where we are going to have our 100th Anniversary and Peace and Justice Gala. We're calling it the Peace and Justice Gala, because if you don't know, YWCA is throughout the country, not just the Aliria YWCA, but the Denver Y, the Baltimore Y, the Atlanta, Georgia YWCA, all YWCA's have the same mission, and our mission is the elimination of racism and the empowerment of women. And so, in honor of our mission, we've invited Father David Link to be our keynote speaker. Father Dave is formerly the Dean of the University of Notre Dame Law School, he was the Dean for 25 years, the longest-tenured dean. Prior to being a dean, he was a partner in a law firm in Chicago, and then eight years ago, his wife passed away, and he decided to go into the priesthood. And so, once in the priesthood, he found his real calling, and his real calling is ministering to men behind bars. So he is the former Deputy Director for the Indiana State Prison System, so he's bringing his message of healing. We're doing this in conjunction with our Community Anti-Hate Task Force, which Sheriff Stomitty and Dennis Will co-chair for us, and a kudos out to Sheriff Stomitty and to the deputies that are here, because I've seen all of their names on our list in terms of coming to our annual meeting. So we're going to have a true celebration for women, girls, and the men of good conscience that have supported us over the years. I also have literature for you all, one is a calendar of events, because if you can't celebrate with us on May 11, there's plenty of opportunities for you to support the YWCA this year. We're gonna have our fourth annual golf outing, if you haven't been to it, it is probably the premier sighting for Ohio State athletes and former athletes, we even have Brutus Buckeye and the cheerleaders that come, that's gonna be on June 22. On June 16, on Father's Day, we're collaborating with the Metro Parks, and also Aliria Harley-Davidson, we're having a motorcycle run to Lakeview Park, and then the Lakeview Park is gonna have a Blues Fest, so you can come to that, there's no charge for that. And then on November 11, actually, it's 11, 12, 13, we're having the first-ever Women of Achievement Luncheon for the Aliria YWCA. We feel that there are so many hard-working women in our community, and Madam Commissioner, you are one of them, that need to be recognized. So actually, at this time, applications are already out, you can start nominating persons to receive that award, and on 11, 12, 13, we'll be presenting the award. And my last commercial is for that event. We're very fortunate, stop laughing at me, Jim. Okay, last commercial. Last commercial for that event is that Cheryl Kruger. Cheryl Kruger is the founder and CEO of Cheryl's Cookies. If you've been to Southern Ohio, or send out gourmet gift baskets, that is her company. She was a 1974 graduate of Bowling Green State University in home economics, can you believe, that's when they had home economics? And she had her grandmother's cookie recipe, and she turned that into a $30 million called Cheryl and Company. She also serves on the Ohio State Board of Trustees, she's a member of the Bob Evans Farm Director, and she has agreed to come to Aliria on 11, 12, 13, to help us celebrate Lorraine County's Women of Achievement. So Commissioners, I thank you for this time, and I hope to see you somewhere in our future. I know that Lori's scheduled for May 11, and may I leave these here for you all? These are your official invitations.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, you did a great job. I apologize, I've got a conflict that night, but the Y does a wonderful job. How do you have this connection to Ohio State Cheerleaders?
Why do you want to know?
Actually, it's to Brutus. Yes, thank you Ted, for that shout-out, for my daughter, who was formerly an Ohio State Cheerleader, and still very much connected, because she works in the office of the President. Thank you.
Thanks, Janine. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner, I do wish to have a brief executive session to talk about potential hire in IT, Job and Family Services, County Home, and also update on, and this will be perpetual through the years, this year, because we have a lot of negotiations going on, on various labor agreements that are expired and being negotiated, specifically today would be the Teamsters' contracts at the County Home, and Children's Services, which is UAW contract. Those topics are allowable for discussions in executive session, so it acts as conclusion of our regular board meeting today. We go into executive session and discuss those issues I have identified, thank you.
Are we meeting with the Sheriff's deputies?
We will, if we meet with them, that will be in an administrative session.
All right, they were just asking me if it was executive or not, that's fine.
Approve, may the reading in the name of the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of April 24?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract to Gregory Trucking, Inc., Aliria, in the amount of $9,130, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for the demolition of 3935 Aliria Avenue, Sheffield Township. Three bids were received, this being the most responsive complying specifications, and is part of NSP III funds.
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, approve the 2013 Community Incentive Grant Funding in the amount of $300,000.
Mr. Bailey, would you like to join us, please?
Good morning, Commissioners, Keith Bailey, Solid Waste Director. This year, we have in the pot $300,000 for community grants, and that is determined based on our previous year's revenue, all right? And it's set up in the plan, if you ever go to Appendix H, you can see how that system works. And then the money is divided between the communities for potential grants by the number of pounds they recycle, so it's a novel idea. The grants are listed in the spreadsheet attached, and you can review them at your leisure, but I'm asking the Board to move ahead today and award the grants, and Marilyn will begin the procedures, all right?
Thank you very much, Keith, glad we got it all done. So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
When do the checks go out to the various communities?
It's a reimbursement-style grant system now, so they have to submit their grant application first. Application comes in, and then it's reviewed, and if it meets all the criteria, it's in the guidelines, then we'll award it, and then they have to expend the money, and then they get reimbursed, so.
Now Keith, there's also additional money that comes through the Commissioners, correct? Amount of 75-
That's our discretionary, Tom.
Yeah, that's the market development program you're talking about, and yes, there is other monies in that account.
What's the total on that?
Well, we're not gonna pay anything out of that until the debt's repaid on the center, and what I was told last, and we are gonna be having that debt repaid this month.
This month, okay, so everybody will all come available.
And then I'll be able to give you a total, all right?
All right. Other thing I wanted to bring up, I was talking with some of the veterans at the Valor Home, you mentioned that paint comes in, they would be able to go through, you could hold the paint for them, so they could kind of mix it if they don't care about the color of the paint, correct?
Be happy to do that for the Valor Home, we get whole gallons of paint that aren't even used, it's gonna lessen my expense at the center, because I don't have to pay for the recycling of the material, and if they want to select some paint from us, we'd be happy to provide that.
All right. There's gonna be some other individuals or groups that'll be contacting you to talk about the grants, and possibly some of this funding that's gonna become available.
Absolutely, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor?
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, advertise for bids for Grafton Road Resurfacing Project, Harlow Township, notice being the Chronicle, May 3 and 10, and open at 2:00 p.m. on May 21. Project consists of asphalt resurfacing of 2.24 miles section of Grafton Road from State Route 57 to the township line, and the estimated construction cost is $820,640, to be provided 80% from federal and 20% OPWC.
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I have no additional comments this morning, thank you.
Mr. Anis?
Commissioners, I have one update on a matter of pending litigation that I want to provide to the Board in the executive session.
Commissioners' report.
First, I want to thank all of you up here and our staff for the beautiful flower arrangement that was sent on behalf of my sister's passing, it was probably the most beautiful arrangement I've ever seen. We attended, Jim, Ted and I, but I know Mr. Williams is also in favor, we went to the, both the Journal and the Chronicle, to talk about our two levies that are going to be on the ballot, and I want to thank the Chronicle Telegram for the editorial, favorable editorial that they gave us on those two issues, and I anticipate that the Journal will also be very supportive in these upcoming levies. And I know we were talking a lot about it being $2 for transit, and we found that it's going to be $1.25 a year, and then $2.50 for the Drug Task Force a year, so it's a small amount to pay to help out our fellow man. Monday, I attended my Goodwill Board meeting, we were talking about the amount of donations have shrunk a lot. I think part of the problem may be some of these boxes that you see everywhere, that you're really not sure who Planet Aid is, and all these other things popping up all over the place, so, you know, if you've got donations, take them to Goodwill, or, you know, one of the other establishments that are here that actually give back to the community, like Salvation Army. We really don't know where those donations go, for many of those other boxes out there, so, gonna hopefully try to have the cities draw up some legislation to either make them, you know, come in and get a permit or something, so that we don't have all these boxes everywhere. And I think that's all I have. I don't know, I'm not sure if Mr. Williams had his bragging rights last week for the, did you bring it up?
No, I didn't.
Last, we both attended his daughter's fundraiser, it was a Texas Hold'em tournament, he had a great turnout, like probably 80, 90 people, and Mr. Williams made it to the final table, so, we didn't play against each other, so, I don't know if it would've made a difference, but-
Is that saying you didn't make it to the final table?
I did make it to the final table, Brad! See, I can be beat. I think the last three tables, I was at one of the last three tables, but it was a lot of fun, great food, great people, and what did you end up, fourth?
I came in fourth, and it was funny, I actually had a Ace-King suit, and a guy called me with a 3-2.
Oh, no.
And then ended up picking up trips, so three 3s, in order to beat me, and then the 3 decided to split the pot, so, it was ending up being $500 each to all three of them, and my neighbor, who actually knocked you out, Dan Hall, he was the one that had actually the most chips, so.
Okay, well, he actually took me out, I had pocket aces, and for some reason, every time we had pocket aces at our table, they lost. I said, "Next time I get them, I'm folding them," so I should've folded them.
Yeah, you beat my former brother-in-law, he had pocket aces, and you beat him, so.
Yeah, pocket aces didn't win at our table, so, that's the end of my report.
Let's go back to work, get off the card games, guys.
Ah, cards are a lot more fun.
Been a busy week. Lorraine County Chamber Board meeting was on Thursday, moving forward, talking about where the condo had sold, and our position in the community was brought up. Commissioner Williams, I attended the Community College, official grand opening of the Ridgeville Campus, wonderful facility, great people speaking, actually, a gentleman I went to high school with, Scott Pembry, his daughter spoke, she's a senior in the partnership over there. Great family, and just a great job the daughter did, her first time speaking in front of an audience that size. Also, I presented Proclamations for Workers Memorial Day in Lorraine and Aliria, both ceremonies, one on our courthouse steps here, remembering those who have been lost working, and then at Lorraine City Hall. On Sunday, I attended the Code Dinner in Aliria, had an opportunity to meet Congressman Tim Ryan, talking about what's going on in Congress, it's not a pretty picture, no one seems to be getting along, and former Congresswoman Betty Sutton was there, so it was nice to see her and her husband, Doug. As Commissioner Kokosi spoke about, we both attended with support of Commissioner Williams, the Chronicle and the Morning Journal, about the two levies on the ballot, with Chief Kavanaugh from the Sheriff's Office. Had a Team Lorraine County Board meeting yesterday morning at 7:30, Community Foundation, our executive board is working on the organization going forward in regards to a new director and what our priorities are, since the state has changed the way we do business. After that, I made to the Transportation Center, Keith, you want to come up and talk about the Byproduct Synergy Network?
Yesterday, at the Transportation Center, we hosted the statewide Byproduct Synergy Network. It was 38 companies that came together to discuss their waste streams, and how they can trade their waste streams and put their waste stream in somebody else's production, so, it's an interesting concept, it's been around about three years now, and they had a very good working meeting in the afternoon, and now they want to come back here again, so.
I want to thank Ross Environmental for helping us put this together, Morpsey, it was nice to meet Mrs. Barnes from Barnes Nursery, it was a big group of people, their Procter &amp; Gamble was represented, I mean, it was players from all over the state.
Bendix was there locally, we had them in, Ross is our only member at this time from Lorraine County, but I'm sure they're, these are all serious players, it costs $2,500 to $10,000, depending on the size of your company to belong, so, they trade their byproducts and put them in other people's production, so we don't have to put them in the landfill, simple as that.
Nice or not, you did a very nice job. Again, we attended the Morning Journal interview, and I had a hell of a day yesterday. I left to go to Oberlin, I stopped at Dairy Queen in Amherst to grab a double cheeseburger, because I hadn't eaten all day, get out, my car doesn't run, so I call roadside assistance, I called Mike Chowner, I said, "Don't think I can make it." Roadside assistance called the local person, I'd like to thank the guy who owns Bugs Towing, because he got my name over, and the lady from roadside assistance said, "This gentleman's in a hurry, he's gotta be someplace to speak." in a hurry, he's gotta be someplace to speak." The gentleman happened to know my name, so he drove from his house, picked me up, took me to Spitzer and Amherst who I'd already called, they had a car ready for me, so I got there from 6:12 when I got dropped off at Spitzer's, at 6:27 I made to Oberlin Inn to give the opening comments and spend with the Neo sock thing last night for about an hour and fifteen minutes, but a very good job.
Must've been nice to be Ted Kahlo.
It was nice man, thank you, people knew me, again, thank the guy from Bugs Towing and thank Steve Donat from Spitzer and Amherst, they got me where I had to be. It was a really nice turnout, packed house last night for Vibrant Neo, talking about how the 12 county region is known, how we'd like to see it by 2040, they had a lot of facilitating, I had to leave by quarter to eight, I don't know what time to finish up, but I'm guessing nine or nine-thirty, I'd like to thank Steve Hambley from Matina County who gave opening comments with me, who's been leading the charge on this and Grace Calucci, the Director of Nowaka, who is actually putting all the hard work into it, so. Don't forget to vote on Tuesday, thank you.
So was the problem, you forgot to turn the key?
No, I turned the key, turned the key, it wouldn't start and I got the smoke smell out of the dash, so I got out of the car.
And what group are you leading?
Yeah, exactly, Ohio Rights Group, Saturday's gonna finish up getting signatures with the AG's office. It was coming out of the car, not being blown into.
Oh, okay, all right.
Well, you know, I guess Tom and I need to go back to school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Yep, as Mr. Kahlo said, we went out to North Ridgeville Campus for Lorraine Community College, great facility out there, actually something I talked about, a great deal about on Friday, I was at lunch and at the Union Club in Cleveland with the Dutch Consultant and met a lot of individuals out there, we were talking about the waste energy and what we have here and one of the individuals knew about Lorraine County, wanted me to put him in contact, we were talking about the waste energy and what we have here and one of the individuals knew about Lorraine County, wanted me to put him in contact with the group because he has a company from Australia that he thinks would be a good fit, so we're working on that. June 10th, it's a Monday, having an individual from Shell Industries come in, they're looking at our steel mill for the pipeline, for their pipeline out in Alaska, we're gonna be talking about different issues, I have multiple congressmen coming, some state officials, I'd like to invite both of you, it's gonna be at 12:30 and we're gonna meet at your deli in Amherst, so get some information, get some great chicken poprikos as well.
Yeah, they got great, what time?
12:30 on June 10th.
Okay.
And I'll send you out a invite as well, so we'll get a list of everyone who's attending. And then Saturday, I was actually attending a kickball fundraiser and I had an individual come up, talked to me, just purchased some land in Amherst, they're looking at expanding, so I'm gonna take our Lorraine County Community Development Department out to their facility on Wednesday to talk about the revolving loans and see if we can help them with expansion, so. That's the end of my report and again, issue two, issue three, two important issues, issue three, I think it's what a lot of people are referring to as a no-brainer, this is the Drug Task Force, one, but issue two for the transit, it's out at the college yesterday and I ran into some individuals, they were sitting on the benches there and they were waiting for the buses to come by and they were telling me how difficult it is to get their schedules lined up with the transit schedule, because you have to get there almost two hours before the class and then if you have issues where a class goes into in the evening, it becomes difficult. Again, this is for $1.23, it's not gonna solve all the problems here in Lorraine County, it's only $246,000, it's not gonna be economic development, but you are gonna help those need, those in need that need it the most, so I hope you'll look at it as a charitable contribution and support both issue two and issue three, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Board Correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kousky.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the Board this morning? Thank you very much, I'll make a motion to go on executive session as outlined by the County Administrator.
I'll second.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.